Sam, yes, yes, from Washington?
Yeah.
Okay, I call the meeting of the Morgantown Planning Commission to order. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Morgantown Planning Commission. Please turn off all cell phones and other devices that may disrupt the proceedings. The Planning Commission conducts business in the following order. There will be a general public comment portion when anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission may do so, but only on matters that are not on the agenda. There will be a five-minute time limit for speakers. All recognized speakers must approach the podium, state their name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the microphone. Speakers are notified that irrelevant comments or comments of a personal nature or personal attacks may result in the speaker forfeiting their opportunity to participate in the general public comment portion. We review, amend, and approve the meetings of the previous minutes of the previous meeting. We consider any unfinished business from previous meetings, then we move on to new business items. First, we introduce the item, and the Planning Division representative presents the staff report. Next, we ask the petitioner to make a presentation. Planning Commissioners may ask the petitioner questions at that time. I will then open a public hearing to hear testimony in support of or in opposition to the request. Rules regarding the public testimony are as follows. Anyone wishing to testify during the public hearing may do so once recognized. Each recognized speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address for the record and speak clearly into the microphone. All comments must be addressed to the commission. Speakers are notified that irrelevant comments or comments of a personal nature or personal attacks may result in the speaker forfeiting their opportunity to participate in the public hearing. All speakers are limited to five minutes. If members of the commission have any questions of the speaker, that time will not be counted towards the speaker's five minutes. If there are a large number of speakers, including many who are parts of groups or organizations, I may, to avoid repetitive comments, elect to ask for a representative to speak on behalf of the group or organization. I may elect to recognize the applicant or agent at the end of the public hearing to provide rebuttal or additional comments, which will be limited to five minutes. If members of the commission have questions of that applicant or agent, that time will not be counted towards the applicant or agent's five minutes. After all testimony is heard, I will declare the public hearing closed, and no further public comment will be permitted. At that time, no one in the audience may speak again unless the Planning Commissioner asks a question. If someone has asked a question, they must come to the microphone and identify themselves once again before answering. Next, the Planning Commission will discuss and take action on the application. Once the vote is final, members of the audience who were present for that particular case may leave if they wish. In order not to disrupt the meeting, people who choose to leave must go to the bottom of the stairs before carrying on the quiet discussion. Uncivil, unruly, or disruptive behavior at any time during this meeting is prohibited and will result in removal from this public meeting. Thank you for your consideration and respect for these proceedings and opinions of all meeting participants. Okay, first item on the agenda is general public comments on matters that are not on the agenda. Anyone have any comments on matters not on the agenda? Okay, let's go to the minutes. September 12th minutes.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Have a motion to have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Two extensions. New business, S twenty-four zero one, three I's, Wisdom Academy, Abdul Tarabishi, thirteen, South High Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm going to be, I'll be going back and forth between the staff report and the slide deck that I put in front of you, just because there's so much text in the staff report, just touching on some highlights from the staff report itself. But the applicant seeks to establish a new school K through twelve private use at thirteen South High Street. More specifically, the applicant seeks to establish a new public charter school at the location referenced in accordance with applicable state law and West Virginia Professional Charter School Board. The applicant seeks site plan approval from the Planning Commission for the development of significant impact because the proposed non-residential use is approximately fifteen thousand square feet. And I'm going to turn to the slide deck here. Again, here's the, this is the particular location, just coming across the South High Street Bridge. As you can see here, this is from near map, is another image of the location at the intersection of Prairie and South High Street. Again, this is looking to the northeast of the three-story building here, the parking, parking surface parking lot here, then Prairie Streets kind of in the background at this And just to kind of go over the development program again, the focus is on K through six. There'll be ten classrooms, and that was noted both in the staff report as well as in the applicant's application, that's down from fourteen classrooms. There'll be a library and resource center, as well as a multipurpose hall. There'll be ten employees, and the maximum projection of students is two hundred by twenty thirty-one. And then, as you can see, the floor plan, the first floor, the second floor, having the five classroom spaces, and the other five classroom spaces located directly above that. In terms of the parking situation, the image on the right shows an aerial of the parcel viewer map, the image, I mean, on the left, the image on the right shows the configuration and the leases and the property arrangement here, and this right-of-way that goes through the property here, that's all defined in both what the applicant acquired from the school board, as well as Alfa and Associates' building there. And as you can see, the parking spaces are adequate on the site as is. The applicant also, when there was discussion about having some turnaround inside the existing driveway, went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and got conditional use approval. The picture on the right shows the parking lot closer to University Avenue on Prairie, where they were allocated up to potentially plus or minus twenty-four parking spaces. So between both of those locations, there's adequate parking with the development standards for this particular project. This map shows, again, and the applicant had this in their application, but the three post-drop-off sites, where the stars are located, one on Prairie, on the upper end, where the stairs are, one on the lower part of Prairie, where there's an ADA access into the building, and then one, obviously, next to and along the surface parking lot here. Should note, and I'll just read from the staff report, "To manage pedestrian and vehicular traffic during drop-off and pickup times at the academy, the applicant made the following commitments in the narrative section. They are as follows: There will be no queuing of vehicles on South High Street; there will be restricted access from High Street into the existing parking lot with two enhanced drop-off and pickup zones; drop-off and pickup times will not overlap with operations at the Morgantown High School regarding drop-off and dismissal; the academy will make bus service available for students, and the bus has already been acquired by the school; and the academy will provide crossing supervision and traffic control by hiring crossing guards and personnel from the Morgantown Police Department during pickup and drop-off times." And I spoke to the police department earlier today and confirmed there have been communications, nothing's been agreed to, but there have been communications with the police department on making that personnel available if staffing allows. And in terms of the drop-off location, on Upper Prairie, where the stairs are, the students would be dropped off there, and if age appropriate, be allowed to cross through the parking lot back to the backside of the building there and into the building at that time. In terms of pedestrian management and some of the issues that were discussed at our workshop, again, the applicant is working to get and train crossing guards. The West Virginia Division of Highways, as I noted in the staff report, has already committed to doing ADA improvements at the sections of the intersection at Prairie and South High Street that they maintain, and the city is also willing to work on its portion to make it safe for all pedestrians that are using that area. Again, the DOH in your packet, upon review, were amenable to the ideas of putting up the, you know, a crosswalk where it'd be appropriate, or some warning signs ahead for crossings. And as mentioned before, a bus has already been secured for the bus service that was provided, and the route that's estimated right now is in your packet. So that will conclude staff report.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, the applicant?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Abdul Tarabishi. I'm a board member of Wisdom Academy, a public charter school authorized to operate, you know, on fall of two thousand twenty-five, and our application does specify thirteen South High Street. And I also want to emphasize our continued, you know, commitment to address all the community concerns, and also highlight that we, as the application suggested, this is, application is a development of significant impact, we want to, you know, assure the Planning Commission and our, and our community that we, we plan on having a positive impact on the community in trying to address any, any concerns regarding, you know, pedestrian safety or traffic. For that, you know, for that reason, we have, we have, we have done two, two traffic studies. One was a, was a simulation based on the maximum capacity, and that we can, we can probably reference, if you want to go to page one forty-seven on your packet, an email from, from Mr. Petro, he's, he's from HRG Engineering. They, they performed an actual, actual traffic study, and, and basically concluded that based on the, based on the size of the school, it would have no, no significant impact on the, I mean, the details, I don't know if we need to present to the audience, or, it's listed in the packet, it's a two-page, I would rather save you guys the details. The other, the other thing that we can, that I would like to reference too, like, you know, I like to look at graphics, and I'm a, you know, if, if we go to page one fifty-three, so one fifty-three is the morning, and one fifty-three is the afternoon, the, hope you guys are covered. So, so the green is, is baseline, is currently right now, because, as I said, they took like actual vehicular, vehicular numbers, and they, and, and that's just a spotted, that's the green line. If you look at the, that's the base, blue line, blue line, I apologize, I'm, I'm seeing it from an angle here, so it's, blue line is the baseline. And as, as you can see here, year one, because we have a maximum capacity of, in our application, we're, cannot hi, we cannot enroll more than a hundred students. And then on, on year five, as mentioned, the building has not have more capac, does not have capacity more than, than two hundred students. So we're taking into those into consideration, so year one would be the, the effect of having, this is basically, year one is the orange, so you can see, it would never affect the peak, peak vehicular, you know, capacity, so you're, because we're, that's what we have, this, the stagger, the stagger of time of operation. And also, you can see, because, you know, Morgantown High has already finished its, its traffic, all our suggested times is only, is going to push that, that graph, as you can see, you know, minimally, so having no negligible effect. And, and basically, in year five, as you can see, it's all the same. So you can see that we really, if I put that on a graph, there is no, as I like to say in my field, there's, there's no evidence of, of any negative impact from, you know, from the vehicular traffic. Now, to address the concerns for safety, I would like to invite Mr. Ahmed, he's, he's actually, he's actually a senior engineer at the Department of Highway, at West Virginia Department of Highway. I believe you're the Assistant Director for Projects in Quality Control, and he actually came in from Charleston to attend this meeting, and I would have him address any concerns for the Department of Highway.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I just like to say, really, really appreciate you listening to us, giving us this platform. I'm no stranger to Morgantown, I've been with Division of Highways only thirty-five years. It's actually thirty-five and a half, but, you know, who's, I ran down. And I have footprints, or, or whatever you want to call it, all over Morgantown. I worked on the Star City Bridge, I was still two-thirds of a rookie, which I know, everybody who, who remember the old bridge know how wonderful and significant that made. University Avenue, Van Voorhees. Next Tuesday, God's willing, will be awarding Green Bag Road, which will alleviate traffic a lot, and we just let just under a hundred million dollar project, which I was in charge of, which is the new bridge and new access to Morgantown Industrial Park. So I'm proud to say that I worked on more projects in Morgantown than probably anywhere else in the, in the state. And I really see this, I've been advising them from day one, and I see this as a positive improvement to the community. We all know many states, in the last election, they put in the palette, basically, measures to give the parents choices where they can send their, their schools. I'm sure all of you, I am too, but not here across the water, a product of public schools. But, you know, as time change, and we see a trend that, that parents basically, especially in, in a great country like ours, where people love freedom, love choices, that, that they like to see other choices other than public schools, some religious schools, some, you know, like this academy where it will be open for, for everybody. So I look at this as reaching to the community, and it will be open, give extra choices for the community. I was involved in a traffic study, HRG, which is a local engineering company, I've been dealing with them over twenty, twenty-five years, they have national offices. We hired them, and they did traffic counts, morning and evening, which exactly what we do whenever we work on any highway project. The peak is always morning and evening, so we design for the peak, which some people say we must be insane, because that's only one hour period. But obviously, if somebody's going to work, somebody go and drop their kids off school, somebody after eight in our work, you don't want them to be sitting in traffic. So that's why we design for, for the maximum and the worst situation, which is only a fraction of the day. Based on their studies, there's not going to be any severe or negative impact in this. I talked to Alfa, I've been dealing with Alfa Associates many, many years, they designed many of the rest area welcome center around the state, they are reputable engineering architectural company, and they entered into agreement with Dr. Tarabishi and, and the school board, so they can use their space and so forth. So with that said, I don't want to bore you, I assure you, I wouldn't be associating myself for putting my credential as a professional engineer if I didn't think that this project is noble, this project will help the community, and this project will not have any severe impact. So with that said, if you have any question for me, or you want me to add anything, again, I sincerely appreciate the opportunity, and we are hopeful that we can work together, and any comment, anything that anybody come up with, we are willing to sit down with them, and basically address it in a civilized manner, and we will not dismiss any concern whatsoever. So with that, if you have any question for me, please.
I have one quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are you here tonight as a representative of the Department of Highways, speaking on behalf of the Department of Highways, or are you here as a representative of the school?
No, sir, I want to make it clear, all that, all that talk about this, just to introduce myself, no, I'm not representing Division of Highways, even though I worked with District Four, when they were dealing with Dr. Tarabishi about the commitment they said that they will do. I'm here as an advisor to them, as a professional engineer, not in the capacity of Highway Department.
Okay. I have a question. Sure. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Is there a, a DOH standard with regard to pedestrian safety in school zones, or school zone markings, or where do we look to, what do we look to with regard to DOH standards for those sorts of pedestrian safety measures along a state highway?
That's a great question. Actually, Mr. Jaeger, in one of the emails he sent, it's been several months ago, he asked that, what, what commitment the school get from local representative from DOH? In this case, it will be District Four in Clarksburg, that's the closest jurisdiction for our Division of Highways, and they committed that they will look at, if there, the speed limit is already very low in the area, so they said, really, there is no need to add another restriction. But they said, if there is any need for extra crosswalk, for any need for any flashing whatsoever, that they will work with Dr. Tarabishi. We have an email from them stating that. Basically, the guy did-
Let me just interrupt to make sure I understood what you just said. So there is no department standard, or-
Yes, there is. It's called MUTCD, which is, you can, you can write it down, which is manual on uniform traffic devices.
So that's what District Four will apply in this case?
Absolutely, that is the manual, what I call the holy book we apply in our work in, in signing any project, whether it's temporary signing or permanent signing.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other question?
Anybody else? Again, thank you so much, we appreciate the service you, you give to the community. Thank you so much. Okay.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the applicant right here?
I have a question, if I can ask it.
Sure.
You know, speaking to the concern some of the tenants have, one of the first things we went over was that there will be no queuing on the South High Street entrance, and I'm trying to figure out, how do we know that that's not going to take place? Because we want to account for the variables that we can't really, that aren't necessarily reflected in all the studies, and that's just one thing that steps, that stands out to me, is, you know, it says that we won't queue vehicles on South High Street, but how do we know for sure that that's not going to happen?
Absolutely.
And, you know, affect the neighborhood.
Mr. Jaeger, if you can just pull on the slideshow where, where it had like the, the three, three stars and the-
Oh, sorry, let me go back.
Yes, so, yeah, that dotted line, that would be-
Oh, sorry.
So it would only be on this one-way street, and this would not block the street. The way that we're going to actually block this access with cones, and only like, like parents, like, it would be a parent major, parents with very small children, their car would have like a, like a, like a tag that, you know, this is almost like a, you know, accessibility tag.
Yeah.
But that's specific for the school, that they, and, you know, so this is what we guarded, that basically, only parents who have that, that permit would be able to, to go in, park, and if they need like any assistance from them and the school, and the staff members to allow the, you know, that child to be dropped off or picked up. So, but, but everybody else would be, and again, this is, we're assuming, these are the cars for people who are not, who do not like, absolutely don't want to do the bus, but we're gonna, the encouragement is like, people who are going to be enrolled to, to use the bus, because we, the aim is to decrease overall, all vehicular, you know, access to, to the whole downtown area, like, you know, use the bus as the main source, what I'm talking about, for the, you know, usually on average, I can't remember the code, that, one of the traffic study, actually, they, they use, they use actually a manual- forgot what it, what it is, a manual that they use in, like, for schools, you should assume that this many cars, this is, this is all part of this, this, the, you know, the, the projections that was made. So, that whatever number, I, I remember probably was about like, you know, thirty percent. So, to think about in the first year, thirty percent of a hundred is thirty cars.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna assume all thirty cars are gonna show up at exactly the same second, right? If you assume it's a, it's about the ten, fifteen minute, you know, drive, you don't assume like with a, with a pickup, drop-off time of five hours, that thirty cars would show up at the same time. So, that's why we did not anticipate even that, that people would reach the Morgantown High, High Parking Lot. So, and the concern that you mentioned from, you know, from our neighbors on Wagner, they should not be affected because all the queues happening on the side, so there's gonna be no queue on Prairie Street at all. So, the queues only happen here. We only listed this as a potential, again, so we have like two, two ADA. But the plan is, as soon as one person like, you know, has that ADA permit, they would leave that line, go along and, and enter, cuz they have the permit to access the, you know, part of them, they can exit the vehicle, build their kids, and so that's, that's our plan to address that.
And also, concerns that I've had, if, if, it's okay for me to speak on it, is that the staggered times may not be beneficial to parents who, a lot of these students, you know, come in late to school, they get dropped off at odd times. I myself, unfortunately, have gone to the high school to pick up my child during the day, when I'm busy and working, and that Prairie Street access is very tight, you know, MHS parks their buses at the top of Prairie Street, and, you know, it's, it's a lot of-
Over, over on this side, this side is, there's no buses there because the entrance is over here.
Right, that's the only entrance, at the top, to get, get down to the bottom of Prairie Street, right? You have to enter at the top, yeah, right there, right?
Yeah, but the buses operate, operate, are always after. So, the buses usually leave, cuz my son goes to Morgantown High.
Yeah, yeah.
They're like seven eighteen, there's usually no, no, no buses are.
Usually, sometimes-
No, no, I mean, there are, I would say almost certain, cuz I drop my son myself every day.
Yeah.
I can tell you with the three years' experience I've been-
Yeah. It, it just, it, it brings, you know, that, that kind of is a concern.
Yes.
To me and I think some of the other parents. But, I will, you know, cede the floor back to you and back to my-
Like, I understand that the traffic that Morgantown High School is creating because they, you know, people are going, quite a lot specifically, because people have to go this way to access the parking lot. And remember, Morgantown High School is a school for about seventeen hundred students?
Yeah.
We're talking about a hundred students here.
Right, right.
So, probably a, a subway on the corner has more traffic than we have.
Right.
One other thing I wanna mention, should, should mention that on record because I wanna list along. So, West Virginia law eighteen five J three, charter schools are, well, the charter schools are subject to the same zoning and building standards as non-charter school, public schools. So, anything that should be applied to them would be applied to us. That's one, one, one code. The other code that I wanna mention is also that, that the, that the state also, I, I don't have the, you know, the reference, but it's probably in, in that, in that paper that we handed out yesterday?
Yes, it was distributed hard copy.
Hard copy, yes. So, it has, here, so it has that, that basically, I wanna mention this also for the record-
Do we know what page? Is that in the text?
Yeah, that's the-
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
What is, it says furthermore, furthermore. So, so, West Virginia law eighteen five J twelve, public charter schools are encouraged to repurpose vacant properties owned by the county boards of education. Subpurposing aligns with the state initiative to make efficient use of public assets and enhance community development. So, and I'll skip for the rest of the things. So, what I'm trying to say is, it is the, it is the state, the state law, the West Virginia state, that they want us to repurpose, this is a, a public entity, a public building, and charter schools are public entities, that the state law actually like, so after this was passed last, last session, last exa- uh, administrative session, Board of Education now are not allowed to sell their property unless they, they, you know, consolidate that with the, with the local charter schools. So, in, what I'm trying to say, to excuse the, to exercise the, the spread of the law here, we obviously bought this property before the law was passed, but it is actually within the, the spread, to maintain the spread of the law, we should, we should highly consider this as a charter school, because alternatively, that's, that's what, what we feel like that direction to, I just wanna bring that up too.
Gotcha, gotcha.
In addition to, I mentioned, the other law is basically, whatever applied to Morgant- so, we're not like, I know the application that says like, you know, private use, but this is not a private use, this is a public use, because charter schools are free schools to the public.
Any other questions for that? Okay, thank you. Okay, any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, anyone who'd like to speak in favor, come up to my front and state your name and address for the record.
So, I don't know, is this my, could I just speak? Is this good enough?
Yep.
Well, thanks again for giving me the opportunity to speak. I think I see some new faces, I'm not very-
You gotta, gotta state your name and address.
Okay. Mohamed Fada, one five four Meadowridge, Townhomes. I think I spoke to some of you, I remember you, sir. I remember Mr. Petros, I'm reading the names here, and I remember Ms. Katie. And back then, I think I, I see some new faces, and I think I, I was pretty emotional. And now, I think, after going through and, and watching our dual work and, you know, the professionals that we have here with, with all the experience that we had, I think it was a great exercise to see, you know, I asked myself one question, what if I have a house in that neighborhood? I kinda switched hats, and I'm like, you know, let's look at this with more, you know, less emotion and more, you know, more objective manner. And I think, looking at all this, I'm no expert in traffic myself, but the effort that, and the homework that's been done, the packet looks very different. I think this represents a group of people that I think are very diligent and also seek the right professional guidance. I like to also think that they, you know, they're really persistent. They, they had their first, I think, application turned down, and then they're going for the next. So, looking at, and I think I made the comment about smoke shops, I know this is not very relevant, but it's just as a community member, the vape shops I saw, I've been in Morgantown now five years almost, the number of vape shops five years ago till today has grown to a point where I would not want to live around this neighborhood. And I think contrasting this, and I understand there's some efforts trying to regulate smoke shops and whatnot, I get that, it takes time, but just looking for those five years, I think looking at a school, an extra school being in this area, would hopefully balance the sheet a little bit. I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of the safety concerns and traffic concerns, I, I look at safety as globally, I get that, but when I hear my daughter that goes to Morgantown High, that's the conversation I'm quoting here. This is a conversation in the seven AM, you know, lineup, when they line up to get into that school, you know, two of her classmates, she's overhearing them, basically telling her, "You go to that vape shop, the guy with glasses does not ID." And I'm quoting here. And so, when we take a step back and look at safety in a more holistic way, I'd like to have an option. The only high school that my kid can go to, and I know this is not a high school yet, I'm just, the concept, I'm in favor of the concept of having options as a parent. And I don't enjoy my kids at an age where they're vulnerable, you know, in a space where there's two thousand students, just simple, one element, two thousand versus one hundred. Normalize everything else. As a parent, I, I feel a little bit easier sending my kid to an environment that has a hundred students versus two thousand. I'm not accusing anybody of not doing their job, I'm just saying, the sheer mass of students that walk into that building, just the size, is almost impossible to monitor. And I'm not saying, you know, some of my friends call me the helicopter parent, but I don't know how you feel, I'd feel much easier if my kid goes to a place where vape is not the main topic, where the number of flavors going from thirty-eight to seventy-five in a week or two, where Chinese imported whatever goods are being dismissed, there's no studies on vaping. And in fact, I have to say, maybe I shouldn't confess, but I tried that thing and it actually tastes pretty good. So, if I'm a fifteen-year-old or fourteen-year-old and someone gives me a puff, I'll be hooked, period. And so, it's, I'd like to, again, I understand your concern of safety, I understand the traffic, all this is valid, but I'd like to just consider one step back and look at safety as a holistic thing. That's all I'm asking for you to do today as a parent and as a fellow community member. Is this place going to add a positive impact to the neighborhood? Or is it going to be an extra humongous vape shop? I don't know if you smoke, I'm not against the freedom of choosing, but I think when a fourteen-year-old sees all those flavors, if it's tempting to me, it's probably more tempting to them. Thank you very much for listening.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the petition?
I put the address here as well, thank you so much. I've been at the meetings where this application has been discussed many times, and we've been continuing working on it. Lot of effort has been put in, I'm also the chair of the Wisnham Academy. Obviously, when I look at the effort that we have made, this lot of learning that has taken place, when we applied for the first time and we took the application, our application was denied. Obviously, we had to work at it, we wanted to prove to the charter school board that there is a need for such a school to exist, okay? And we have extremely worked very hard vigorously for the last one year in order to prove to them that there is a need for such schools, there are schools that are needed. Now, as far as the traffic is concerned, I'll give you enough, cuz I go through it every day, it's a private school. My grandson goes to a private school, I stand in line for that private school for fifteen, twenty minutes in the morning, fifteen, twenty minutes in the evening, okay? But they are doing a wonderful job, they are about a hundred students, okay? But the need, the parents' needs are being met. So, it's extremely important for us to recognize that there are needs in this community, there are parents in this community who feel like that there needs to be options available. There are professionals who come to this, Morgantown, you know that, okay? They want to know what kind of schooling is here, what are the options? So, we certainly believe in what we are doing is adding value to Morgantown, is providing them options, educational options that are there that they can look at, okay? We, as far as I'm concerned, because I'm heading that Wisnham Academy, that we want to be the exemplary school in the state of West Virginia, that we want to show people how education should be, cuz there are challenges. I'm an educationist, I see challenges day and night. I'm asked to come to the meetings, parents take me to the meetings, to the schools, okay? So, we need to look at it in those perspectives as well, okay? What is it we are trying to gain? I know there are, we have gone through the challenges with where we are right now, but we are committed to it, okay? So, the commitment we are making is a very serious commitment. I do not want to play with the education of a child. That's the first thing. The school is established, the school is established for students. Everything else is secondary, we want to make sure that our students learn and enjoy the environment there. So, I really respectfully ask all of you to look at it from a different perspective, okay? I know the highway board and everything else and all the diagrams that have been made and so and so forth, we have shown the commitments, we have purchased a bus, what is all that? There's all commitment that we would like to move forward. So, I humbly request, please, to consider this and accommodate us. Thank you so much for listening.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Okay, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the petition?
Good evening, my name's Liz Vitolo, I live at one twenty-eight Wagner Road, just up the street from the proposed site. And I was part of the neighbor group that organized the letter, so if I could, I'd like to read the letter into the minutes and then just offer my personal comments.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Rather than wasting your five minutes reading the letter, we have the, the letter, it's gonna be part of the record.
Thank you.
If you wanna read it, that's fine, but-
I would love to, and I just wanted to highlight a few pieces, if you don't mind, thank you.
No, I don't mind, I would just, you know, you got five minutes, you either-
You got it. So, dear planning commission, please accept this letter of concern and objection to the proposal, and I won't state the numbers, but commonly known as thirteen High, South High Street, the plan references the conversion of a vacant building into a school K through six. We live in the vicinity of the proposed site, and we have significant concerns about locating an elementary school that will greatly add to the already congested area. We're already subject to so many cars passing by our houses throughout the school day. This is exacerbated during the drop-off and pickup period at Morgantown High, and then followed by the buses and pickup and drop-off for middle and elementary schools in the area, or students in the area. In reading the Dominion Post and the other coverage of the proposed school, there's a reference of being dropped off, the drop-off time being staggered after the start of MHS. If this is the plan, this will prolong the increased traffic to our neighborhood. Furthermore, many MHS parentsly, parents, and this has been referenced many times, currently will arrive ten to fifteen minutes early from drop-off and pickup and park legally around the neighborhood while waiting. At the current level, it is difficult to enter and exit our driveway. So, my, my house is just up the street, we have a round driveway. For me to leave in the morning, it, there, I've gotta wait for a number of cars to come through, and it, there's significant congestion. It creates a hazard for pedestrians and pets, I have an indoor-outdoor ca- a couple of cats, and, you know, this is a concern too. Residents, we chose to live in this neighborhood knowing that MHS was present and that there would be occasional high traffic volume. However, the proposed school would increase the volume of cars, creating increased congestion with anticipated, with the anticipated student population of a hundred, and then I heard this evening with the potential growth of, of two hundred and additional staff. A successful school will grow, and setting this precedent will open the door to further encroachment on the neighborhood. We as a neighborhood would like to, or the neighbors that have signed off on this, excuse me, would like to underscore that our objection to this proposed school is about personal safety and nothing to do with the school itself. On a personal note, I, I appreciate the very thoughtful application and the presentation, but it's not our lived experience in the neighborhood. And if, can I walk over and point out a couple things here? So, I appreciate the, the, the illustration here. This curve here is almost a blind curve, and there is parking along here across from Alpha Associates. So, if there's even a slowdown that stops two-way traffic, the number of students that come around and almost, you know, hit, cause accidents because there's parking right in front of these residential streets, I don't think that was reflected in the, in the traffic study. The gentleman, Mr. Taylor, spoke about the street in parallel to the high school, that is heavily used throughout the day. And so, I'm not, I, I have not been privy to the traffic studies, but I don't think it really reflects the traffic that goes through the residential streets during the day, and then watching the queuing and the obstruction that, that parked cars with awaiting parents' cause. So, I, I appreciate your consideration of our concerns. Again, I wanna underscore, our concerns are about traffic and safety and not about the school itself, and thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the petition?
I'm Nancy Lynch, I'm at one twelve Wagner, I'm literally across the street to- I'm Nancy Lynch. I'm at 112 Wagner. I'm literally across the street. To not reiterate, I was part of that letter. I have, actually, our car has been hit on Wagner because it's already too thin. Prairie's too thin. It shouldn't be two-way. Also, that part that is one-way, I've seen cars go up and they speed through up there because they're, know they're doing something wrong. It's already very dangerous. I feel like it's asking for even more trouble than already exists. We're actually, we're at the point we want to move due to the congestion and noise and inconvenience of not being able to, I have to be careful about when I come home. I can't get into my driveway or I can't park in our permitted spots. And then as far as all of these, you pointed it out, that the reality and the numbers, parents that will actually be dropping kids off is going to be more than, I think, thirty percent, especially when they're younger. And where are these kids going to play? And where do they have their lunch? Are they in there all day long? All right. I, that might be personal, but that's my feeling. And I just ask you guys just to go up there and view it yourself during that congested period. I think you'd come to, or see the same concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to the petition?
My name is Christian Chopp. I live at 128 Wagner Road. I just want to add a couple comments to this. The first thing being that if there are seventeen-hundred, eighteen-hundred, or two-thousand students in MHS, regardless if there's only a hundred at this new school, there's a hundred more, right? So we're adding to that population. Secondly, as far as the queuing goes on South High Street, if you've ever driven or tried to get across the South High Street Bridge to go towards town when MHS is, when parents are dropping off kids in MHS or you're trying to get downtown in the afternoon, when MHS lets out, you have a queue all the way back across the South High Street Bridge. So there's already queuing going on. So to say that we're not going to have any queuing or adding more students to the scenario here is just, that's unrealistic. The second thing, or the last thing I will add is, the only place right now, and I'll point to this map here, where there's not queuing, is now proposing there is going to be queuing. Because there's school buses here in front of the school. There's school buses here on this side of the school. And to get to this entrance now, you have to further feed through the neighborhood to even get to this entrance. And again, I will challenge you to go in front of MHS as school is letting out and try to get through that road. Because you have parents on every single side street and you have buses as well. So you're literally having to navigate through the neighborhood to go even three blocks over. So I am in full support of the school, just not there. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay, let's have staff recommendations, please.
In reviewing the DSI application and supporting documents, it is the opinion of the planning division that the proposed school K through twelve private use is consistent with the intent, location, and pattern character map of the 2023 comprehensive plan. Additionally, the applicant has taken steps to address pedestrian safety issues and mitigate traffic concerns during drop-off and pickup times at the academy. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the applicant's request for type-three DSI site plan approval with the following conditions. The Wisnham Academy does not start before nine AM or dismiss before two fifty-five PM each school day. The applicant works with the city West Virginia Division of Highways and other stakeholders to fulfill the commitments outlined in the DSI application. And that to the satisfaction of the city of Morgantown, the petitioner shall develop long-term and short-term bicycle storage spaces in accordance with thirteen sixty-five oh four of the city's planning zoning code. And that will include staff's report.
Okay, discussion.
Having dropped off kids for six or more years at Morgantown High, I share some of the concerns about getting into a drop-off area. I guess the other thing to point out and maybe something to consider to make recommendations to future parents if they're going to do that is utilization of the street on the other side of Morgantown, which is, is it Edgewood or something like that?
Yeah, it's sort of like.
That is, it's one-way coming toward Morgantown High though, right?
Yeah.
And then you can go down Prairie and drop off instead of coming up through South Park Wagner and all that. So that might be another thing to think about, just because I know it's, the way I was coming from, it was easier to go the Wagner way compared to the other way because Morgantown buses were all there. But maybe if it's after their hours, they're not all sitting on Edgewood and it's easier to go that way. So I think that's something to think about as far as recommendations for parents if things go forward.
Mr. Chairman, you know, Mr. President, that the, the idea of the school, and I think one of the commenters made it, the statement as well, the idea of the school, the need for the school, the desirability of the school, I think personally, it's a great idea. And I think that state law supports it, as, as I think the applicant has discussed. That's not the question in front of us. The question in front of us is the impact of this, this proposed use in this neighborhood. Is this the right place? And another comment that's, that I really strongly agree with is it's, when these people moved into this neighborhood, the high school was there. That was the deal. They had notice of what they were going to live with. This is a change, and perhaps a significant change. Why do I say perhaps a significant change? Well, because they've come up with a wonderful plan about how to minimize the impact, which suggests that there is potential impact. We all see that, impact on the neighborhood, impact on the safety of the children, probably more importantly in my mind. So it's a great plan. But once we pass this and say this, this development is, is appropriate for this location, we're done. And we don't have a police power to say, oh, well, you made these five pledges about how you're managing traffic, about the bus, about, you know. Well, God bless these people for their work, but it's a volunteer board and they change. We need to look at the long perspective here, not just the next five years, the next twenty years. Who knows? You know, so, so my question to the planner is, let's say we make conditions of how traffic is managed and all these great, the crossing guards and things like that. Are they enforceable? And how in the future, let's say, all those plans change or perhaps are abandoned, what happens then? What do we have as a matter of recourse?
Sure. So one of the things that we could look at in terms of enforceability perspective is looking to do an access agreement to utilize Prairie for the queuing and to monitor that over a period of time. So that if chance down the road that, you know, it's not working out, then we can revisit within, say, any year. And I believe that's what the Division of Highways has put forward with South High Street in terms of their permit for the access for the school. Now, it's going to be revisited in about a year's time. So that's something that we could do if this is moved forward in terms of looking at that in the future.
So let's, let's say it's a disaster, as some of the neighbors fear, or significant negative impact on the neighborhood. You're suggesting that we would come back in a year and reevaluate that and say, oh, why would we do that? Pull their occupancy permit?
We could look at that.
That's what we would do?
Yep. That'd be one of the options we could look at.
That's a big risk for them, certainly, and a big move for us. That's, that's serious police power.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to know if anyone has had the question of the school, if traffic is, since traffic is such a problem, to look at a traffic movement study around the area. I know where my child went to school previously, it was a complex, so there was a high school, an elementary school, and a middle school. So, I mean, it was much more than this area that we're talking about here for the number of students. But the transportation person for the school district was very good about listening to concerns of parents in the neighborhood and they reworked it and traffic did work better. And honestly, I've found in my experience of dropping my own children off, that some of these schools can run it as well as a Chick-fil-A. So, you know, I, I think that when you're talking about the safety of, of elementary kids, that they take it, in my experience, they've taken it very seriously. And, and I have always appreciated that as a parent and I would expect no less in this situation. I know that it's painful and, and it is a lot of traffic. I get that. I also, I'm, I'm grateful to see a school stay in a downtown because it looks like Suncrest Middle now is going to move a little bit more on the outskirts. So, you know, I think that it's important to maintain that for the life and vibrancy of a city. And I think that that would be a loss. And I do have faith that, again, I think that they will take the safety seriously. And I, again, I think the high school should look at assessing the current traffic situation. It is terrible. But I know we can't do that.
Well, I mean, Katie, you make some great points, but i- in defense of the high school, because I live in that neighborhood, I mean, it's organized and it's managed. And they have, they have lighted guards. They have barriers. I mean, it, it's a big high school in a residential neighborhood.
It is.
So, so as you suggest, there's no way around it. You just kind of have to live with it.
It is.
That's what these people moved into.
Right. It is. Sometimes there are always opportunities to adjust, you know, maybe as new people have come on and not been used to that traffic pattern.
So when you say it's organized, yes, to an extent. I have, I drive up Prairie every day on my way home from work and my way home at lunch. I drive through that area. And if I get a little bit of a late lunch and MHS is letting out early, every parent in the world is parked illegally on every street. It happens, right? And it's going to continue to happen. And yes, they have crossing guards at Grant and Wilson, but that doesn't, nobody stops the parents from parking illegally.
I agree.
When this application first came to us, there was really no traffic plan. And I think my biggest concern was not only were they going to be parked illegally, people were going to be stopping on South High Street to drop kids off, kids crossing the road. That was my main concern. The queuing on Prairie actually alleviates a lot of my concerns because my concern was more about safety of the kids getting to and from the school. Because parents are going to do what parents are going to do. And if you say, drop off on Prairie, and seventy of the hundred are going to take a bus and thirty, only thirty are going to drive, and those thirty have to use Prairie, I guarantee you, ten of them are going to stop on South High Street. Because that's just what people do. Okay? That's just what they do. There's no way you're ever going to stop that. But what you have to do is try to minimize it, which I think you've done by saying, this is the, this is the pattern. This is the way you drop off.
I think those are great comments, Pete. And I agree with all of them except this. And I, and you know, I've been talking about safety all along with this and I still think it's an important consideration. But the most important consideration is the quality of life in the neighborhood. That's what DSI review is designed for. And I'm looking to the planner to see if you agree, or am I misguided in that regard?
That's definitely one factor, for sure.
What other factors should we be considering? Safety's an important issue.
Absolutely. And how that will impact the use of the facility, that being, yeah.
Compatibility of the use.
Yeah. I mean, I think you make a great point, Katie, about the vibrancy of our downtown and this, this stranded battleship of a building sitting there vacant now, vacant for a few years now. So I, I mean, are those valid concerns as well?
And I think you can look at that on the flip side, too, is the walkability of a school in your neighborhood, a grade school. Because, look, that used to be the commonplace. Every little neighborhood had a, even Evansdale had a grade school in my neighborhood. And that's gone away. And to me, that is actually an asset to a neighborhood where you can have a school that's walkable. Now, you might argue, maybe they don't want to send their kid to a charter school. But, you know, I actually, one of the reasons we moved to Evansdale was there was a walkable private school close to, now that school moved across Morgantown, by the time our kids went there. But that was one of the things that drew us to the neighborhood. And so, you know, I would argue that could be an asset to some people. And I, I do not discount the traffic issues at all. And, but I think there is another side.
And having lived in Morgantown for thirty years, I understand the traffic. I, it's not an easy place to drive. And it's not an easy place to drive when schools are letting out. I've sat on this planning commission for probably eighteen years, something like that. And we see a lot of things come before us. And a lot of what I hear is, gosh, this is a great project, but not in my neighborhood. It's got to be somewhere. Otherwise, we're not doing anything. You know, and I get the concerns. I live, not there, but I live probably eight blocks from there. I drive that every single day, twice a day. I walk or run through that neighborhood daily. I get it. I get it with the traffic. But I think one of the things that, that I have seen before us in traffic studies before is they say, you know, they grade the intersections A through F. And they say, hey, man, this is already an F. It can't be an F minus. It's not, you add a little bit more, it's not really going to impact it that much. I think, will the traffic impact it? Probably lengthen the time on both ends. If, and I don't know what everybody's work schedule is on Wagner. I really don't. Some of you may work from home. Some of you may have odd schedules. I would think that by the time the traffic is done from the school in the afternoons, most people aren't home yet. So it's really going to affect you in the mornings. And I know, I get it. I mean, we've driven through Morgantown traffic forever. But when they first came to us, I think they had a concept. But now I think they have a plan.
Okay, if you're going to, if we're going to support this, I, and you make a recommendation, I hope we would include some stipulation about the enforceability of the promises, the durability of these, of these pledges. Ricky suggests some, some sort of annual review. Can you talk about that a little more?
I would, it was just an option.
Some kind of a permit, is that?
Like an access agreement to be able to utilize Prairie for the queuing. That's something that we could explore with legal counsel.
We would find, in worst-case scenario, we'd find a breach of that agreement. It would be some sort of civil action, which may include withdrawing the occupancy permit.
Correct. Yes. That would be one potential option. But again, I want to work with legal counsel to draft something like that.
I'd like to see that, frankly, before, I think we all should see that.
So, and I have concerns of really enforceability of that.
The enforceability of the agreement?
Yeah, what Ricky just said.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So the sheet's this down there? You're not supposed to turn in there from Fountain or whatever street that it's going down. I think it's left didn't last. Oh, no, it didn't last. You go up to Olive Garden and Red Lobster. You're not supposed to turn left out of there. Right? How many people turn left out of there? I did it Monday night. Because you could. So, yes, you put a sign up. You say, here's what you're going to do. Unless there's a police officer standing right there, people are going to do it.
Educate the parents, supervise the drop-off and pickup. I mean, these are all things they've promised to do and may work, may well work. It makes sense to me. But how do we, and really, no offense, please, how do we make sure that happens not just next year, but the year after and the year after that? That's where I'm stuck on this. I think, all promises being kept, this, this may work. I mean, I, I think you guys make very persuasive points about why this may be desirable, right?
I, I agree, Tim. I was still on the fence, but everybody has made some good points. But like you, I just, the long term.
It's still Reagan saying, trust but verify.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so, okay, but let's put another scenario in there. Morgantowns are growing, right? Who's to say in four years Morgantown High won't be twenty-two hundred students? And at that point, if you deny this, you still have the same number of cars or more. And there's nothing to do with it. And there's nothing to be done about it. You can't stop the growth of that Morgantown High. And the same thing would happen without our control.
Can I say something?
No, not yet.
I think Morgantown High's got a capacity that's managed by the BOE and, and, uh, it's not gonna get any bigger than it is now. It's full.
It's full, but if students move into the district, they gotta put them somewhere, don't they?
Put them in university.
It, it's been fuller than it is right now.
Yeah.
But by the same token, I know we're talking about two hundred at most or so versus nineteen hundred, but those nineteen hundred disproportionately don't drive to school unless they have parking. And I get some parents pick up, but there's a lot of kids in that nineteen hundred that are busted. So, you know, I.
Seventy percent.
So, the numbers are a little, a little murky as we're really comparing numbers there.
This, this, yeah, I would agree that a lot of the, the parking and the traffic is a little bit of an art, more so than a science, and this is not. But I would agree that it's, something like this is not going to, and, and with, with certified engineers looking at this, we have the most knowledge that we possibly could. In this instance, um, but I would think, too, if it becomes that big of a problem, folks are not going to be dropping off their kids. It's kind of induced, man, with traffic, if there's a lot of people in traffic, they tend not to drive, so.
Might choose not to go to that school.
Correct, correct. But I would think for the school, it's, it's to their benefit to be as efficient as possible to getting kids out, off, off campus. For both schools, that is. And two, just that, we, we've touched on it quite a bit about how we are not looking at the use here necessarily. But this, this, the site limited, limits its impacts here. I think, uh, and granted, I wasn't here for the first go-round, but, um, the fact that we've kind of gone through this process and there's been attempts, more than attempts, there's been good faiths and efforts, um, to kind of address these issues. I would like to see somebody in that building. I would like, the school use is, is great for that property. I'm not sure if it's gonna be used as office anytime soon. And so, I think anyone's, we're not kidding ourselves that there's no impact, adverse impacts on this property. But, so we're trying to make the best as we can on this application. I would say, I tend to agree that any type of enforcement measure is kind of hard for us to, for anybody to enforce beyond that. But I do think that, um, you know, this being a charter school, there's, there's kind of, they're putting skin in the game as far as trying to get this done the proper way, um, in making sure that students are, are being safe. And parents enroll more students, um, or they wanna, they want to be known as having a safe, um, place for their students. So, I'm, 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 I'm in favor of this application as presented.
Any more discussions?
Well, I don't think we're ready to vote on it until we know how we can make sure it works as promised. I think that, that's my position. I mean, you guys can all vote the way you want, but I hope you see my point that there's been some significant and important promises made here. How do we make sure, again, in the long term, that they, that they are, are kept?
If I may, on, on the, on the staff recommendation, number two, could we add language to that to give discretion to staff and legal counsel to provide whatever is means to make sure that the commitments listed in the DSI application are met? That the state, staff and legal counsel will do what needs to do to make sure that we can review and.
Oh, you're cutting us out of the loop, huh?
Give us the discretion to do it.
Once, once we approve this, it's a legal issue and the enforcement have never come back to us anyway. Nothing ever come back to us at this point.
Yeah, okay, yeah. You're right.
Just because you guys are attorneys, you know what I mean?
But, but we have no enforcement power, so.
We do have no. And we don't wanna.
I, I would just like to say one thing, because I think it was mentioned earlier, well, it was mentioned earlier by one of the applicant supporters, that, you know, we don't determine there was a need for this school to exist in Morgantown. That's not why we're here. So, you know, I know it was implied when the discussion was that we're kind of determining whether there's a need for the school. And that's really not the case. We're dealing with land management issues and, and, and that's the simple fact of it, so.
I think the point Mr. Williams makes is really important. We understand there's an impact on the neighborhood. The, the question is, on balance, is it better or worse? That's, that's.
And as you say, does it fit the comprehensive plan?
Well, we know it fits the comprehensive plan. We've got that staff. Because if it didn't, we couldn't do anything with it anyway.
Right, right.
And, you know, that corridor up, up the hill with the abandoned car wash and those, I mean, and the DHHR campus there. I mean, there's, we can be hopeful that maybe this will help us improve that.
I do have concerns that I have heard from neighbors, faculty. I like the concept and the idea. I don't know that that's the perfect building for a school for children because there is no green space. But I know, you know, we probably can't get everything.
That's, that's what I'm asking right now.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm coming in later to, to this whole plan, but I just kind of would like to just make sure that I voice that to everyone. So, you know, I still do have concerns.
Well, and I'm always gonna have.
As do I. And, and the hope that these, uh, this school will be good neighbors.
Right. Do I have any notions?
I move to approve, amended as discussed, where for enforcement.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's second. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is.
Before we move, uh, just before we lose the point, Ricky, I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys come up with anyway. Even though you've cut us out a little bit, I'd like to be able to.
Wait, we got it.
I don't. He's, he's wrong already. Okay, next item on the agenda, MAP twenty-four dash one seventy, Woodward Development LLC, eleven Hartman Run Road.
Goodbye. Safe travels back to Charleston.
So, just to provide context, on February eighth, twenty twenty-four, the planning commission approved the applicant's request to subdivide tax District eleven, tax map thirty-one, parcel sixteen, more commonly known as eleven Hartman Run Road, into two parcels of land with the following condition. That condition said that the applicant submits a revised survey plat that identifies the two zoning designations on it, as well as a legal description for the new parcel of land. And petitions the planning commission to rezone the new parcel of land to a B two instead of being a split zone district. And this is them fulfilling that request of the planning commission. So, if you look onto the screen again, the image on the right, on the left, shows an aerial view with the parcel viewer map of the portion or parcel of land that was newly created. On the right-hand side is the zoning map. You can clearly see the two split zones. The, um, the, the part of the property that fronts on to, in the lower half, that fronts on Hartman is B two. The upper half that fronts on to Mineral Avenue is R one A. This is the, uh, the, uh, location of the, the site. And again, looking at the future land use map, it's considered a corridor mixed use. And commercial uses are obviously encouraged in such places. That will conclude staff report.
Okay, is the petitioner here? Yeah, if you want, if you wanna add anything?
No, I'm basically, so, um, my name's Woody Waverden. I just, basically, when I introduce myself, say hello, and, uh, also, back on that other topic, I'd like to say, amazing, uh, the, uh, gentleness watching it in a world where everybody seems to yell at each other. It was nice to, it was nice to see you guys have some conversation that, obviously, we weren't all in agreement.
We get all the yelling out earlier.
But I've, I've worked a long time here with Ricky and, um, definitely from a set to, to get a lot of this put together. Um, as you go through this first one and then the second one, um, hopefully Ricky can speak to this. We're, we're trying to, um, develop a piece of land that's been borderline undeveloped for forty years. Um, there's a gravel lot there in the corner. So, our goal was to, you know, build it up and build it up very nice and get it to a spot that, that helps the area and produces more income tax and tax for you guys as well to continue to make Saberton thrive, which we've seen over the last ten years or so.
Maybe they'll give us a raise if you guys pay more taxes, so you can.
Yeah.
We'll put that in its budget season.
I'm not sure I can pay, I'm not sure I can pay much more around here, but I'm, but that's it. So, if you guys have any questions, I'll.
Do you wanna have any questions?
Actually, I have a question. So, um, and this is trying to read topographic maps for myself, it's a little bit difficult. But if, the land behind this is an R one neighborhood, correct? Or well behind. And there's an elevation there, right? And so, what's, what's the elevation between this and that?
Basically, um, so if you see here, right behind this brown building is basically a hill. I don't know how visually you can see it, but it's on your map. The top of the hill goes above to here.
Okay.
Now, the, the big issue with all of that is some of, uh, I guess when, this property's been the same split since like nineteen fifty. So, the zoning that happened originally, it's all been one parcel, or it's all been one huge parcel since then. So, it should have theoretically never been split zone to begin with. It should have all been B two to begin with, because it's all been one singular parcel. Now, the up top parcel, oh, sure, you can see it here. So, here's the bottom, the bottom base, that's up here. And then up top here would be considered, you get to buy that service right where it should to appear by the hook and cast and up top on Mineral Avenue.
And, and it looks, rough estimate here, maybe fifty to seventy feet, is that right?
Yeah.
And what's the height restriction in B, is this B two there?
Seventy-two.
Okay.
This is a, a, uh, ignorance question. Does the height requirement also include the, the hill of the wall?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
So, he asked about the height requirement, which I never thought about, but does it include the, the hill as well?
And that'd be from.
Just building structure.
It would be from that grade.
Okay, cool.
If I, well, I would just add one comment to that. If the property is rezoned, one concern would be the property that's on the upper part of the hill along Mineral Avenue, which abuts a residential ground area. You can only have one principal structure and use on the property.
Yeah.
So, that would prevent anything being developed on that if the applicant's petition goes through. So, that wouldn't be a concern in staff's opinion.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out topographically where it's gonna sit versus that.
It's a good ways up there, for sure.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks. Okay, um, where was I? Oh, any, any member of the audience, if I speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition? Staff recommendations, please.
Sorry, sir. After review, staff finds that the proposed zoning map amendment to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan with respect to the goals set forth in the land management plan, as well as the character area growth framework and land management plan, or future land use map. As such, staff recommends approval as presented.
Discussion.
Move the forward recommendation to the proposal to City Council. Recommendation due on the council.
Does motion have a second?
Second.
Third or fourth?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't miss that.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Next item, SP twenty-four dash one seventy-two, Woodward Development LLC, eleven Hartman Run Road.
So, again, Mr. President, this is to, uh, for a, a type three site plan. Again, the proposed building is only two thousand square feet. The qualification for the type three also includes looking at the total area of the site. And just given, as the applicant mentioned, that the site is over two acres, that's why it came through this process. Uh, there's a replica or imagery of what the building will look like. Um, here's the site plan provided. I'm just gonna walk through this in terms of, um, what's been presented. This is the latest iteration that we received from the applicant, and we appreciate them working with us and having tech review with our team to get us to this point. But just to point out, there will be two driveways, in and out, one way, means of ingress. Those were wide and actually to accommodate the, um, the, 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 the fire trucks or equipment. Initially, they were smaller, so the applicant worked with us on that. Some other things to point out, there is a stack, there is a drive-through on the backside of the building. Based on what they're providing and the type of use, they're, they meet that standard. There is parking, adequate parking on both sides of, when you come into the driveway at, is it sixty or forty-five? I think sixty-degree angle. Um, and so, in terms of the width and, uh, length of the parking spaces, it meets our standard. They have a dumpster enclosure, which is required in all new construction. The one thing that we are still working through is the part of the drive-through does come around the backside of the building, does cross that new property line. So, we're either gonna look at trying to get, and work with legal counsel to see if a permanent easement, since it's the same zoning district, might work for that in order to accommodate that. Or the applicant may look at coming back and maybe doing a, a minor boundary adjustment to address that crossing of the property.
Who, who owns the other property?
The applicant does.
I don't know.
Oh, you own both, okay.
It's basically, in a perfect world, that, that involves always having to go through, I would move the line, but that seemingly would make me go back through the entire process.
It would, if, if we did that, it would be a minor boundary adjustment and there would be.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's pretty easy to do. If this gets approved, then that, that can be, that's an easy, that's an, that's an easy one, yeah. That, to me, that's easier than a permanent easement.
I would agree.
Any landscaping or logging plans included here?
Yep, yes, we're still working on the plan that you provided. It does have landscaping. And the applicant will be asking for a few variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, in staff recommendations, it would be contingent upon the BZA granting those variances.
It's such a public spot, you know, I would make it look nice.
And if you go through, we, we've updated all of our landscaping. Our goal is to build it very similar to what, you know, down, down at the Star Office. If you look at the files, um, ads from Albany and, um, gathering from assembly, basically, done the plans that we've done for those as well, so.
Where was I on this one?
Pardon me?
I, I didn't know where I was on this one. Have we done, have we done public comments yet?
We have not.
No, we have not.
Okay.
I do have a question as to, so the southwesterly, the variance request potentially, that's for a buffer yard on the parking there?
So, it'd be, so if you pull back up the original site that shows the brown building.
Yep.
So, okay, here is an adjacent operational business ground.
Sure.
Okay, so where this building is now is roughly the same location as the new building will be.
Right.
And our drive-through lane is just about right here.
Right.
Now, the only request we had for a variance on that, and Ricky was looking up some of the jurisdictions, was to not have the additional four feet of landscaping, um, to the left of that. It would just be curbed. That way, we didn't eat up more parking.
Gotcha.
Um, now, because of that, we made some concessions in, in the front, as you see on your packet. We've actually added more landscaping than tentatively we would need to.
Sure.
We thought we could kind of, to make it look better.
So, I will say, one of my concerns, or not concerns, is kind of going through this process and then jumping ahead to a, a variance request already. So, as to, you know, not being privy, you know, working through the technical review committee and everything like that, and what everyone else is saying. Why a landscape, especially that, uh, bank of sixty-degree parking on the left there? I'm not sure if there's required, uh, landscaping buffering there.
It is. We have, we have landscaping everywhere but that one spot.
So, there's, so I didn't, I, I couldn't tell on that, the, the parking there on the south side.
The side.
Yes. So, that's, there's, there's gonna be landscaping there?
Well, there'll be landscaping around here, and then we've discussed with Ricky, he was gonna check, but we would more than happily, basically, this is one of those times where we're gonna ask you what you guys would like.
Perfect.
If I need to put landscaping here in order to get my buffer there, I'm more than willing to do that. It's not, I want it to look as nice as I can.
Sure. Because my, my opinion that this might be, I don't say overparked, you know, you guys do your studies on, on how much parking is required for such a small business.
You guys are the ones that have the rules on parking.
Yeah, so it looked like it was ten, but you're showing twelve, is that right? I think if the minimum's ten was.
The minimum was ten, that's correct.
My personal opinion is that I'm sure it'd save you some money, too, is to get, you know, we don't need that much more impervious surface. I'd much rather have landscaping.
My personal opinion is that I'm sure it saves you some money too, is to get, you know, we don't need that much more impervious surface. I'd much rather have landscaping there, especially on that corner.
I understand, but I, I.
Sure.
For two thousand square feet, you need more than ten parking spots. So, there's no, there's no good way to do it, especially if our tenant doesn't, uh, last and we have to go re-tenant into a Starbucks. Starbucks is one that always requests upwards of, you know, fifteen. Now, this would be one of our smaller sites, but if, if we want to build it in a manner that can gain a national tenant, which I think is, is what I want, obviously.
Sure.
But I think that'd be beneficial for you guys as well to, to be able to. Our goal is to never have vacant buildings, right? And our goal is to always be able to refill the buildings and refill them with, you know, maybe even better tenants down the road.
Sure.
So, the first question you get asked, when you get asked about national tenants, is square footage or parking?
Absolutely.
So, I am more than willing to do anything you guys want landscaping wise, um, to help all that, but I, I do need to really kind of hold on to my parking as much as I can. So I, I can gladly add, I can gladly add the landscaping here and here if you guys see fit, and obviously you see what landscaping back here as well, so.
Yeah. I put, that's, that's next to that guardrail there.
What'd you say?
The landscaping there, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You know, I, my personal preference, especially too, if we're talking about variances before anything's kind of getting really solidified. It's one of the design phases to have the landscaping there. You know, if, if you have to move the, the parking, I guess that's, you know, your right to go seek a variance, but my personal preference is to keep landscaping and not have to go through a variance request.
Now, you understand the variance request.
Yeah, 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 right. I just want to make sure that, you know, it wasn't shown and just in case.
I just appreciate your accommodating attitude.
Yeah, no, that's what, I'll tell Ricky, I, I guess, and we build a lot. My, my dad's done very, very good job throughout the state and we've learned that you guys have a very hard job to do. Most of it, I don't, I would imagine it's not a paid board. Um, I don't know for a fact.
It wasn't worthy enough.
Yeah, and you guys gotta sit here and get yelled at for every decision and, uh, follow stringent rules and look in the future, so. We try to build, I overbuild almost everything I do, but I get yelled at because I haven't been on budget yet, but we're sneaking up on it, so. Anything I can do to help, I'm more than happy to. I just try my, try my butt off to not, not waste parking spaces with, with things when there's plenty of spaces to put good, uh, good quality landscaping around.
It's a great spot, um, for development because it, as you know, it's just dark and dismal back there.
It's gonna be a great improvement, so I, I hope the lighting plan would be another condition that we would ask staff to pass on before we finally.
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause our goal is, the building will be sufficiently lit and then, um, we've discussed with Ricky and we're getting it all together, but there's plenty of light poles there in the house. So there's light pole here and then along to the left. Then, uh, we bought the property, I think in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, and so we got all those light poles, um, on the left side working. And after we build this, or not after, as we're building this, we are going to potentially pose a light pole in this building and then for sure one over here in order to, uh, project everything and light the space up.
Nice.
Yeah, lighting the entrance drives is, is important.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Good, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
It's an interesting strategic approach. It looks like you're building a Starbucks. I get it.
Let's see what happens in a few years. Cause you need that, right?
I think it came to Starbucks right there.
Okay, so.
Down the record.
No, no, he wasn't at the mic.
Stricken. Okay, um, any member of the audience like to speak in? Favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, staff recommendations, please.
Staff recommends approval of the type three DSI site plan with the conditions listed in your packet.
Can we add, well, I don't know if we want to add this as a condition, but, uh, potentially getting, doing a, looking at a minor boundary adjustment for that line. And so, cause you, do you have permanent easement? What do you have in there? For the, uh.
I'm sorry, what was?
What do you have for the staff recommendations that, that?
The boundary line for the.
For the boundary line?
Yep.
What do you have?
That was, that's to be worked.
What page of the staff report is your staff?
Yeah, two forty-seven of three sixteen.
Oh, I turned these upside down.
I know, right? We were talking about that. I, yes, we.
I'm gonna have to buy a bigger mailbox.
It was difficult getting them in there, so, um, yes, if that, that could be definitely, um, it's not listed as a, as a condition, but it could be. To just, and that could be, that's a minor boundary adjustment, so that could be probably handled at the December meeting.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would like to add that as a condition, cause you gotta, gonna have to get something on there. Either, either permanent easement or.
We have a permanent easement drafted. We just, it was more of a question for you guys, if you guys would, if we can quickly make the boundary adjustment, we will gladly bring the boundary adjustment.
Yeah, cause I mean, that's usually how you fill out the application.
Yeah, there's no public hearing, so we, as long as we get it, get it in time, we can get it for a December meeting.
Yeah, and you get it in a December meeting, yeah.
I'd like, I'd like to add in the, in the conditions, the landscape, uh, staff approves the landscaping and lighting plan.
Okay.
And with that, I move for approval, subject to staff conditions as amended.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Good luck. Thanks for your investment in Morgantown.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any committee reports? Staff comments?
Uh, just an update, we have two new staff members. We have a new zoning administrator, Ceyler Thompson, so he's doing a wonderful job. Uh, have, have him aboard, and then we have a new community development services coordinator, Caitlin Lewis started a few weeks ago, so we're happy to have her onboard as well, so. We're getting the team fully staffed and we're still missing a planner, but we're working on that.
So excited we're gonna get to meet these people, or?
Yes, absolutely. We can do that, for sure.
What's gonna happen is some meeting that Ricky doesn't want to come to, they're gonna have to come.
That's how you work it, okay.
So, but thank you all for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I want to thank, uh, it was a great discussion on that Wisdom Academy. You guys brought some angles that I, I wasn't seeing, cause I was dead set against it.
Me too.
Thank you for the insight.
Well, that's what we're here for, right? We all discuss, we all change.
Not you, I was talking about.
Oh, fine. Never about me. Okay, fine, anything for the good of the commission.
Move to adjourn.
Let's go.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.